At the beginning, we'd like to start with a moment of silence and ask you to join us, please. Thank you. Ms. Smith, you will introduce your new leaders in the field.
This is Mr. Avery Butler. We're proud to have him here tonight.
I'm doing the.
Avery's a fifth grade student at Northside. He's done a super job over the years. He's an A.B. honor roll student. He enjoys football. He played that in the fall. I think he's going to sign up for the, the host, sign up for flag football this spring. Keep his hand in that. And also coming up this Thursday, he's a member of the Northside Jet Toy Competition Team. That one preliminary round. So he'll be representing Northside with a small team. Two other people, one other? One other. And so we'll post that, uh, general lead on Thursday for the, for the jet toy competition. I think the similar elementary school is going to be there for a little company. Avery, if you could start us off.
To the flag of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Avery.
Also, Avery has super parents, Mr. Bruce Butler, Ms. Giselle Butler. And also there's an occasion for Giselle Butler to be honored tonight. If you come forward. Just before, I think, maybe before, we had all the snow and ice and so on. Giselle was honored by the upstate chapter of the South Carolina Reading Association. She attends the meetings there for several years. She's been our building representative and kind of one of the few Okoni representatives as well. We've been fortunate to have her in that role in that she can come back to the school and talk about some of the best and things going on in the upstate, certainly South Carolina. And what happens is it's in her classroom. So it's an honor. And I think Mr. Navid had the opportunity to assign this, Dr. Thorson. Honored, she was a distinguished teacher of literacy. And this is, uh, some schools from Anderson, uh, Okoni, Pickens. Huge honor. In keeping with the technology tonight, we'll have something in just a moment. But I know some of you are like me, you always want to hear the click of the camera. We don't ever hear it now with the, with the phones and all that. But each and every day at Northside, we have a lot going on. And one of the things that we found is students are obviously very proud of what they do, what they produce, what they show. So we've come up with a couple of different ways to have their work shown, be it, maybe it's a artwork or be it an activity that they've had. So what we wanted to do tonight was take something that we use on a regular basis to promote activities at school and kind of have it be a nice Northside news for you all. So we're going to push play, I think. And we're honored by our Northside guests.
Good evening and welcome to. Good evening and welcome to a special edition of the Northside News Show.
Today is Monday, February nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
My name is Olivia and I'm in the fifth grade.
And my name is Meg and I'm also in the fifth grade.
Hey, Meg, I must have missed the minute. What makes this edition so special?
Remember, Olivia? We're recording to the members and guests at the February School District of Okoni County Board Meeting.
Oh, my goodness, I forgot. Should I be nervous?
Of course not. It's a room full of very kind people.
You. Hey, speaking of kindness, our trip to like core essential value of this month is kindness. Kindness is showing others that they are valuable by how you treat them.
Yes. Author Henry James said, three things in human life are important. The first is to be kind. The second is to be kind. And the third is to be kind.
Did you know our motto at Northside is to be learners for life? We aren't limiting ourselves to reading, writing, and arithmetic.
Arithmetic?
Math, silly. Anyway, whether interested in being a weather chaser or a meteorologist, a forensic scientist or engineer. Or maybe even the next iron ship. We've got you covered.
Check out how we're learning at Northside.
Good evening, board members and guests. We are here with the breaking news regarding Northside's recent cookie shoot. As you're reminded of this horrific event of this prime, check out this video. Miss Corbett had put out a tray of cookies as a treat for the teachers. And when she came back fifteen minutes later, the tray was gone. All she found were some clues to who might have taken it. At the scene, someone left an I.O.U. note along with other blue papers. A cup with fingerprints was found along with a partial footprint and dirt on the floor. Miss Corbett collected the evidence and needs your help to solve the mystery.
These were the suspects for who took the cookies and were having a science night to figure it out.
Students of ours were asked to analyze clues during Northside's science night. Students were asked to analyze clues, fingerprints, footprints, etat, and chip preference. And it was discovered, Miss Corbett is guilty. Shocking. Our news team will keep you up to date when sentencing and handed down. That concludes our news show. Until next time, make sure you cry with pride by being prepared, united, respectful, and responsible. Enjoy your board meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity. We thought that was a neat way to bring a lot of those students and activities to you all tonight. We'd like to think that we are learners for life and always looking for ways. And we really feel that, that video is a super way to promote what students are doing, how they can participate in that, and certainly how we can showcase them. So we appreciate their involvement. We appreciate you all tonight. And thank you very much.
Same with Ms. Smith. Good job. We had Mr. Williams, who was also tonight.
We, we will go after that one. I'd like to thank Mr. Navid and the board and Dr. Thorson and administrative team for giving us the opportunity to serve our adult learners at Okoni Adult Education. Thus far, we've, thus far, we've had four hundred twenty-eight students walk through our doors in our third session. We still have another session to go and we in the middle of this one as well. So hopefully we are able to break five hundred as possible. But we do have some things we do want to present tonight as what we're doing on highlight one part of our program tonight. But before we get to that, we want to have a special presentation. So if there's nothing, of course, we'll come back. The Seneca Golden Corner Rotary have again presented to Okoni Adult Education a check for three thousand dollars to help with GED scholarships. This would pay one hundred fifty dollars for twenty students to get their GED, which is actually called the H S, H S E D, High School Equivalence Diploma. So we want to thank the Seneca Golden Corner Rotary for again awarding us three thousand dollars to help students move to the next chapter of their life. And also in our. Okay, while they're up, uh, we have, uh, one of our volunteers we'd like to recognize. And we'll have, uh, Ms. Veronica come up to help us with this. But, and if anyone needs a blood pressure check or that sort of thing, we will do that, but for a small price. We've got a watch budget and everything. But we want to have Ms. Audrey Johnson to come up. Audrey's one of our volunteers. She's in our ESL program. And Ms. May is going to tell you a little bit about Audrey and what she does when she comes to visit and help us with our students in our ESL program.
We'd like to say that the, the teachers, we do all the academic things and Audrey does all the fun things. She is an RN at Okoni Memorial Hospital. And she's been coming in and making presentations and talking to the students about healthcare, also about careers in healthcare if they're interested. And we have planned down the road to take some interested students to the hospital to go on to field trips so that they can find out what it is. The majority of our ESL students are under the Trade Adjustment Act, unemployed because of working at COVIDian and it closed down. So they are definitely in the market for a new career. And so we're hoping that this will be a help with them. And besides that, she just talks to the students and you'll see when we get to our little presentation, the kind of things that she says, she's a great motivator. And the students just have a ball when she comes in to the class.
All right. And also with another pathway coming up, career pathway, that we partner with Tri County Tech to do health, health science. We will be using what Audrey does with the students and also introducing that new pathway that will be coming up. So that will roll right into the next chapter. Thanks, Audrey.
Thank you. I love it.
And also, um, while I'm up, before I turn it over to our two extinguishers, teachers who will tell a little bit about our ESL program, I want to tell you about our recent awards that we just got from our test exam. This is a measure that the state measures by how well we're doing for performance of getting our students to meet their goals of being posted, pre and post test. So we did get that award from Columbia in, uh, February. And also, um, to make way to leave and to what they're talking about for the ESL program, we also were awarded the Civic, Civic, Civic and Sheriff Award. That goes along with our ESL program, helping students with the things that they need to help they're going to be in the community. So we are proud of these awards that we will put on our award tape in the school. We just want to make sure we're aware of what we achieved from the state's department. And now I'll turn it over to, uh, Ms. Veronica May and follow, uh, Rogers who will tell you a little bit about our ESL program.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carla Rogers. I am currently, uh, the ESL coordinator for the Adult Education Program, as well as an instructor, as well as a person who just has to do everything. So it's my pleasure to be here today and, and, uh, tell you about our program. Our program actually has two different sides. We have our main site in Seneca at Code Learning Center, as well as a satellite site in Okoni, uh, Bright Hall and Okoni Academy. We have six staff members, four teachers, two teaching assistants, and because Ms. Audrey is so awesome, one very awesome volunteer teacher. We, in our, in Seneca, our most distinguished person is Veronica May. She's been here the longest and she was running the program by herself for many, many years before she retired and so kindly came back. But currently she's training me in this position as well as acting as the literacy coordinator. She has, uh, M.D. in, in Community Occupational Programs in Education, as well as an M.S. in, uh, Human Resources. And it's, for a while, she was a South Carolina ESL City Trainer. She has twenty-five years of experience in ESL and literacy. And it's, it's interesting because she began as a volunteer. But she also has background in human resources, which is really useful for working with our adult population. We just recently have a new person, Ms. Kelly Holloman. She's a currently ESL instructor. Was, she's worked thirty years in Okoni County. I'm sure some of you know her. She's very awesome. She knows where she worked, uh, as a teacher and guidance counselor with, um, with, uh, non-adolescent children. She is fantastic. She's rolled right into her position. She says she loves getting up to come to work and everything. So that's excellent. She has a B.S. in physical education and health, as well as an M.A. in secondary guidance. And once again, her background really does help us, especially since we're going to be moving towards this secondary, uh, career pathway in, uh, in health science. So having her background is going to be really useful for us. My name is Carla Rogers, not to be confused with Carla Rogers in Rattinell. So if you're sending a email to me, make sure it's the right one. Okay? I actually do not have any background in education. However, I do have a B.S. in Spanish, as well as a B.S. in English. And while I was getting my masters at Clemson in Professional Communication, which is an English program, I was working as a, an English teaching assistant, which is basically a person who teaches compositions refreshment, as well as I worked at Greenville Tech doing the same thing, teaching English one-on-one. My background before this job, I actually worked five years in the SC Works Center. Also one stop before then. So I've seen the trade. I've seen the WIA. I've seen all these different programs, as well as working with our clients. So having this partnership with these agents, I already had it established with me. Me, uh, really comfortable in the position that I'm serving in right now. And just the highlight of Ms. Audrey, when we asked her to, you know, give a snapshot of who she is as a volunteer, she, she sent this in. And I really just want to express how this shows what kind of person that she is and what kind of energy she brings to our program. She says, knowledge is power. Education is power. Our health matters because health is power. Education is wealth and health is also wealth. Both of these are yours to hold on to and treasure. Understanding that we will reach our full potential when we are at our best. Understanding that nothing really matters if we are not here to enjoy it. I wish to empower our students to be champions of their health by knowing what is expected and encouraging them to pursue it. So even though she has all this great health background, she's been really great about introducing things to our students who maybe, um, because of cultural background, would not have even considered. So, um, just last week, she actually came to our school and did, uh, a very minor health screen where she checked blood sugars and she checked blood pressures and just encouraged people to know about their resources and how that they can, um, be proactive and maintain and improving their own health. Now, in Wahala, we do have a regular teacher, Ms. Pamela Youngblood. She teaches in the morning class. She has a BA in Secondary English Education. She came over from Pickens County to help us out. She was retired, felt like she wanted to do a little bit more. So we appreciate her being in our program. She's had over twenty-five years as an educator. And I've interviewed a few students and they just love her because, uh, you know, how, the positive energy that she's bringing to the classroom. And I work in Seneca, but I also work in Wahala in the night program, teaching mostly people who work during the day, but still want to try to, um, improve their English, as well as work on trying to go forward and transition into a GED. We can't mention the Wahala program without mentioning our two, um, teaching assistants. Ms. Beatrice Angel, who is a teaching assistant, she's also pericrol certified, as well as Gloria Valdeson. What's nice about having these ladies, because in Wahala, our population is one hundred percent Spanish-speaking. So they have a teacher that doesn't speak Spanish. We have an aide that does, really does help in making sure that the paperwork is filled out correctly and making sure that they understand their responsibilities. So these ladies really do help us out quite a bit. And, uh, what's nice about Ms. Gloria is that she started as a student. She started as a student and she got a job at, at Board Warner and liked it so much that she works at Board Warner during the daytime and she comes to the night class in the evening, um, to, to continue helping other students like she was helping. Okay? So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Veronica May.
Good evening. Thank you for having us come and talk about our program. As you can totally tell, we're pretty enthusiastic about it. The next slide is, is just showing you the, the people that we serve. And there are eleven different countries, eleven different nationalities. Some of them obviously speak the same language, but many of them don't. So we have China, Colombia, Ecuador, El Salvador, Libya, Mexico, Peru, Russia, South Korea, Ukraine, and just last week, the week before, we have a lady from Uzbekistan. The students have a varied, um, varied backgrounds. Some of them who've come from overseas are well-educated in their own language, but they lack the English ability. And that's why they come to class. And then we have people who, who don't have the same, have a high level of education and they are potential, um, students maybe for GED. A lot of them, um, the, the trade people that we got, we had over thirty people who passed the Workkeys test. Majority of them were at a silver level. Uh, we had a couple of golds and the rest were bronze. So, um, that's kind of what, what we, um, we work on. The, um, the program serves working students, homemakers, and then students working towards advanced degrees, as well as the trade people who are working to become reemployable because their job disappeared and the, um, the, the qualifications to get a job now are different from when they started at COVIDian probably twenty-five years ago. And the day class is, um, different because we have the three instructors. We have, um, three, we have four levels of students. And this is something new. We started, um, this semester. I'm sorry, slide. She's a technical genius. I just, I just try and follow along with it. So we decided to, to try this and have a specialty. So Carla teaches the language arts. She teaches reading and write, uh, sorry, writing and, um, and grammar. I work with reading and Kelly works with speaking and listening. And if you know Kelly, that was the perfect thing for her to do because she just has a ball with that. And, and, but the students need to be, to be talking and using the language functionally, not just, um, you know, practicing and, and doing that. And so the students rotate through. We just had to add another level. We had three levels of difficulty, but we had, three people came in recently. One from Uzbekistan and the other two speak Spanish, who have almost no English. So we had to create a third, a fourth level, um, for them. And we're still kind of working, working through that. In the, um, evening class, because Carla is the, is the instructor, then she does it all. And she's been working on Workkeys, pre-GED, and also workplace communications. These are our community partners. SC Works, of course, because of the, um, the trade. Tri-County Technical College. A lot of our, um, people who, trade people who came in went, one, one gentleman from Peru went immediately to Tri-County Tech to take the manufacturing certification class and passed it. And now he's, he's back. He's working at Schneider. He's already been promoted twice in the last year because he's got the skills. He just needed to, to have that credential. And then we had another group who went, they provided a, a day class and an evening class because already a lot of these people are working. They, uh, they're working part, they're working and then they're coming to class, um, in the morning. And that was one reason why Carla added to her evening class because those that were, uh, working in the daytime wanted to be able to come and continue to study at the same level. So, um, we have, um, a lot more that have taken that certification. Okoni Memorial Hospital, I've already mentioned with, um, Audrey. The Adult Education GED Program, our goal is to, is to streamline students to get into GED so that they move out of us when their, when their skills are, their confidence is enough and go into the GED to, so to complete, um, the GED. And then the school district family liaisons. They've used our, um, facility here in Wahala to, most recently with Canvas, to show the parents how to access Canvas. So they had parents come in and, um, they were able to use our lab and, and to do that. And then in the past, we've worked with them on various different, different things. Mr. Williams already mentioned this about the award, so I don't need to, um, talk, uh, except the one he didn't mention, I think, was last year, which was the Workkeys Award. We were, we had the, um, the second highest number of Workkeys certificates in the state, regardless of size of the program. And we're considered a midsize program. Incorporating the Career Pathways Initiative is the next thing that we do. GED already had to do this, but we were given another year to start with the, um, with the initiative. So by the end of this year, we have to have a plan in place as to how we're going to incorporate that, um, in, in the, in the following school year. And so we're already working with Tri-County Tech to co-enroll students, um, in the program. We have seventeen trade-affected students who are already employed and most of them are continuing to come to class because they, they want to, um, to further their education so that they can get an even better job. A lot of them are actually making pretty good money, especially if, if the ones who are working, the more technical ones, the mechanics and, and people like that. So they're, they're pretty anxious to get, to, to move ahead and to do that. So, um, and we have the preliminary work, as we mentioned earlier, towards incorporating the new healthcare career pathways into the curriculum, which is going to be required starting, um, in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
And so you can see some of the things that we're doing as we highlight this one part of our, um, aspect of our program with the ESL, um, program. Also, some of you probably can remember when, uh, Ms. May first started. She used to drive the literacy bus. I don't know if anybody remembers the literacy bus, but this is Ms. May. She, when she retired, we were able to talk her into coming back. We're so glad that she did. Also, um, the part when she was speaking about the Tri-County Tech, we are partners with them in the career pathways. And we are truly blessed to have that partnership, see our students move into those pathways and eventually get jobs. So again, we thank you for entrusting our adult learners in our hands to further their education and help them move to the next chapter of their life. in our hands to further their education and help them move to the next chapter of their life. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Next on our agenda, we have a motion to approve the February 19 regular board meeting agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for the February 19, 2018 regular board meeting.
Motion in a second. Anybody see anything? He's changed. All in favor. It is unanimous. Public comment. Did anybody sign up? Anyone that signed up for public comment? Excuse me, then we need a motion to approve Exhibit 1, which is the minutes from the January 16 work session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the January 16, 2018 work session.
Right. A motion in a second. Anybody have any comments? Hear none. All in favor. It's unanimous. Action items for us to vote on. The bond resolution is first. You want to touch on that?
I'm gonna let Ms. Moore touch on that one for you.
We do, if I can get it to come up, we can see it. We are asking you to approve our annual bond sale. This year it's $15,250,000. The resolution is actually for $15,500,000. Just, it's the not to exceed. I got an email from Brian today, and it is going to be $15,250,000. And the sale will be next Tuesday. So, and that will keep us going with our capital projects. We'll stay within our 31 mils of tax and within our 8% capacity.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the bond resolution for $15,250,000. Be so. Go ahead.
I move to approve the bond resolution presented by the administration.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor? It'd be $15,250,000. Thank you. Then a revision Exhibit 3 for the 18, 19 school calendar.
And this is because we had to add or make the change for Election Day to be a student and staff holiday in even-numbered years. So I'll make sure I make that note for each even-numbered year from here on out. I knew they're in the general election, but, you know, we let that one slip by me. So we've changed an in-service day in October to match it up with, move it to the 5th. So we'll have an in-service day on the 5th and a student staff holiday on November 6. That did extend the school year into the first week of June. But there's no way to get 180 days in there unless we take some Christmas or other times, and people don't want to do that. So we ask that you approve this change so we can get it publicized for everybody that's making any kind of plans or arrangements.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move a revision. The 18, 19, 2, 5, we approve it.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Questions? Hear none. And all in favor? That, too, is unanimous. Next is Inclimate Weather Day Forgiveness. I know a lot of people interested in this.
I get more questions about this than I do everyone else combined, I think. So we have gone beyond our three built-in makeup days, which actually the next Monday will be our first makeup day that we will use on the 26th. And then we have one in March, and then we have one at the end of May. But state statute says that days 4, 5, and 6, it's a local board decision. And we wanted to get that quickly. Our recommendation is, as our neighboring districts have done, is that we ask that you vote to forgive the days missed. Even though on the calendar, it will show 45 days in the third nine weeks, there will be 43 class days as long as nothing else happens weather-wise.
Still good. Okay, do we have a motion then for the forgiveness of these two days?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we...
You're gonna be popular. People like that.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Inclimate Weather Day Forgiveness as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor for giving the two makeup days? Thank you. Can forgive one more if it happens.
We can. Let's hope that, we get a lot of rain, but let's hope the warmer temperatures stay.
10-day forecast looks good.
We're getting closer. That window of opportunity is closing quickly for the bad weather.
Good. The one-to-one initiative?
We, when the audit was presented in December, there was, because we, our schools and departments did a nice job of not overspending, and we also received some revenue we had not budgeted from the, or from the state and the county. We had a $1.6 million excess to put toward the fund balance. Well, for us to be able to finish out our one-to-one initiative from 3 through 12, we've got it 9 through 12 now. We discussed it as a leadership team. We talked with our principals. And we've lost out on some funding that we had typically gotten, some RLIS Title VI funding and a little bit of, well, a pretty good cut from the state and the technology funding. So we would ask that instead of us going, putting $1.6 million into the fund balance, we put approximately $1 million into the fund balance and use the other up to $600,000 to finish the one-to-one initiative by purchasing the devices we need. It may not quite be $600,000, but we would use up to that amount.
Okay.
Question?
Sure.
Would that give us 100%?
It will give us 100% 3 through, 3 through 12. Yes, sir.
Where are we going with...
Well, we're taking, we're taking the other devices. There will be classroom sets, and we think that we'll actually be 100% 1 through 12 with all the devices we have that we'll sort of pass down to K1 and 2. But they will, at a minimum, have classroom sets in there that they can use in their centers and their learning station. Well, we're trying to get away from the iPads because the kids have to be able to type their answers to the questions for SC Ready and that. So we're trying to even extend the Chromebooks down to first and second grade. Most of them have gotten away from the iPads. They may have a class set that they use, like I say, in center time or for a particular app that they have on it. But all the apps that we have there, we can, we can get on the Chromebook as well. So we're kind of phasing out the iPad purchases. We'll use the ones we have until they, you know, run out of their lifetime. But we're trying to go more Chromebooks. We just got to work on those typing skills and getting those kids to understand it because, you know, third grade is when they got to start typing their answers on the test.
All right, do we have a motion for further discussion?
I guess I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the one-to-one initiative funding as presented by the administration.
Have a motion in a second now. Is there any other discussion or question?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Hear none. And all in favor of the one-to-one initiative? Thank you. That's unanimous as well. All right, the next two, I think we can do together.
Sure.
And I think you presented those as minor changes to the forms, but Policy JFB School Choice and Policy JFB-E1 School Choice Application. And both of these are second reading.
Right. As we said, we just needed to tweak the policy just a bit. We met with our principals, so we have, and actually, we talked about it on Coffee Talk this morning to get, start getting the word out. But what we would like to do is have a deadline of June 30 in the summertime, a hard deadline for applying for school choice. And then after that, we would not allow school choice unless you moved into the area or if you were already enrolled in a school and you moved to a different attendance area because you're already on that roll. So that's the one change in the policy, as it's written. Second bullet, June 30 deadline, and change form to application. We do everything online with this. So we also made a change to the online form, which will be in a Google Doc. But in the third block, we added student, the school student currently attends just for tracking purposes. We can sort by that. It makes it easier for our principals to look at when they're reviewing them to see if the student qualifies. So it just is more of a housekeeping item for us. We also are taking out some language at the bottom that is no longer applicable. Make three copies at the school, send a copy here. We used to do everything by paper copy. Now we do it online. And then we, again, will highlight the part about the June 30 deadline so that people are aware well, aware a well of that. I will make sure that we have it on social media. We have it on the websites. We have it on the Coffee Talk. We talked to Dick and Greg and those folks so that people can't say they didn't know. We'll give them plenty of opportunity. One call and those kind of things. In fact, after this is approved, I'll do a one call at the end of the month to say March 1, it's open, and people can go online and start doing it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve on second reading.
I make a motion that we approve on second reading, Policy JFB School Choice and Policy JFB-E1 School Choice Application.
Sir.
Have a motion in a second. Any other questions, discussions? Hear none. All in favor? It's unanimous. And then we need a motion, the last item is the Executive Session for Personnel Items Employment Recommendations and Changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move a new executive session for personnel items and employment recommendations.
Motion in a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank y'all. We'll be out in a little while.